Talk a bit about, it's just kind of been batted around, but there's a problem with the sheriff's office, right? And there's been some talk that if we were to do something about that, maybe we could make a building big enough that could house, I actually mentioned it to you, I think, we talked a little bit about it, to put them all in, right?
I think they're running out of space up there.
Right, it's relentless, but what I'm saying is if we sign a five-year lease, right, and somehow this gets built, then we're on the hook, right, for five years' worth when, I mean, we might not do anything, but...
I think, I think if we do something like that, it's gonna take you five years to get it done anyway.
I don't know.
Probably a couple. It's gonna be, we think, work in the past on buildings up there.
That might be, I don't know.
There are a lot of factors that go into that equation.
Yeah.
Now, I treated it as a, we have done this in five-year increments, it's rolled that way. And I do know that the landlord anticipates it's a five-year renewal.
Right.
I don't, that goes beyond the scope.
No, I get...
My goal here was to put something in front of you, and want to renew it, you got it done. You did, it wasn't gonna take too much heavy lifting. If you want to renegotiate or talk to Mr. Jordan, that's your prerogative. I think you fellas know, you know, I just need an office and...
Yeah. When does this due, on the January 1st?
The, it needs to be renewed.
November 1st.
Well, we're past the deadline.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't see him racing to the courthouse to get an eviction notice, so I think we're okay as far as timeframes are concerned, but it is certainly something that we need to have in place by January 1st.
So can we delay it and get in touch with the landlord and ask about it? Maybe a shorter lease, maybe a three-year lease or...
Well, maybe there's a, we could agree to, I'm just wondering some of this off the top of my head, but it might be that, I don't know, you could maybe agree to some kind of, if we did this, instead of the full lease, there'd be some kind of termination payment or, I don't know, that kind of thing.
Sure, I mean, I think these are all conversations we had. You are not under the gun here, so you can take a moment to investigate your options.
Okay. How long have we had the building up there, five years?
You're at, Clyde, are you sitting down? Ten years.
Okay, ten years.
Yeah.
All right. He hasn't changed the amount of rent in ten years.
No, you may recall, when we did the renewal, he actually went in and made quite a few modifications for us because that first move-in, we realized, okay, we need a little of this, we need a little of that, he made all those changes for us, so he's been very accommodating and he never changed the rent, he just did it.
Yes, he has.
So I do consider him a good landlord, he should be treated right. I don't think you saying, hey, let's explore some options, means anything else. Doesn't mean anything in opposition to that.
No, no, not at all.
So, I thought you guys were gonna marvel at the fact that I, as prosecutor, sat down and drafted a renewal of the lease.
Well, as marvelous as it is, it is marvelous.
If you're not a legal genius, just look at the document.
But now that you've broached that in, as marvelous as you have been, then maybe you should take that marvelous contract thing and go back and say, what these options mean exactly?
I'd like to get out of the negotiating contracts business, I'm good at negotiating sentences, if anybody's interested.
Just by way of history, I was involved in helping to draft the lease because I was working for attorney Frank Undercoffler when he represented the county, when you recall. Ten years ago, the attorney representing Mr. Jordan was Paul Mill. So I would suggest that if you have a problem with the lease, that you contact the county attorney and not ask Andy to do that.
No, it was a...
Oh, I know, I figured.
So you would need the attorney to draft any changes that you would like to see or negotiate anything with Mr. Jordan's attorney, that's the proper way.
Why don't we do that?
Why don't we set up a meeting with Mr., now would that have to be executive session or what? If we met with Craig and Paul, would that be?
Yeah, you could actually do it in the second session.
Okay, so why don't we set that up and then, yeah. Okay? I mean, it's absolutely no problem with Craig, it's just, I'm just wondering about what, what possibility might happen, might be nothing, but...
I think it's very prudent to say, okay, if we have different plans on the horizon, well, how does this intervention, I don't think individuals will lose sleep just because of that.
And I did see that this was rather brief for you.
Thank you, thank you. Now, speaking of being brief, the, as you may recall, I have continued with the remote scheduling, asked if I could do it through October. Tried to slip in and talk to you that I was, hey, I was gonna continue in November because those numbers didn't change, so I'm back to give you a heads up that I've continued with it. I've talked to Anders Skogren in Oxford, we're still doing it through December for the other two counties, I'd like to continue. We always have somebody in the office, there's always someone there to respond to the needs of anybody coming to the door, but it does ensure, if heaven forbid, the virus comes through, it doesn't wipe out my entire staff at one time.
I understand.
I have suggested that we do an agreement at this point because initially it was gonna be a one-month thing and then everything was gonna return to normal, but where we're extending this, I think that we should have the agreement in place with the staff.
And I agree with that.
Yeah.
Good.
Any issues with that, those going through December is what I plan, come back to the numbers.
So I'll get those to you, those agreements, or to Sarah, whichever's easiest.
Yeah, you can send them to me.
Okay.
And I thank you for the list to show who's in the office each day. That helps us a lot.
We can continue that.
Thank you.
Good. So I like your documenting of it.
Yeah. Well, I feel like I could use some more of your time, but...
Thanks.
I got nothing. I'm on my way to respond to the table. All right, thank you all. Go with God.
Okay, item number four, approval of a new finance manager.
So we have done a couple of interviews with some applicants, and we have come down to the decision to recommend Diane Dunham. She's from the Towne Temple. She has 10 years municipal experience, and she would be able to start on December 6th, and we'd like to recommend the amount of $21.31 per hour, and it would be a 37 and a half hour work week.
All good. I move we do it. Second motion. Okay, moved in second, do we approve the hiring of Diane Dunham? All those in favor, so signify. Unanimous?
Thank you.
Good. Item number five, proclaimed ballot results.
So that should be right in your folder.
What, do we just read it out? All right, question one. Shall the position of elected treasurer be abolished and replaced with a treasurer appointed by the county commissioners? The yes vote was 2,410, the no vote was 7,507. The no vote wins. Question two, do you favor increasing the number of Franklin County Commissioners, Commissioner's districts from three to five, and staggering the terms of the five county commissioners beginning in 2024 following redistricting conducted pursuant to the Constitution of Maine in 2021? The vote results, yes, 5,782, the no results, 4,154. From the Secretary of State's office. Paul, thank you. Any questions? Do we make a motion on that?
I guess, I move we accept the result, I guess, that we do.
Yep.
Second motion. Moved in second, that we approve the result. Not that we can do anything about it, any... You know, people have spoken. All those in favor? Unanimous? Good?
All right.
Cash, number six, cash out of the bank time for the employees.
Yes, once a year, we come to the commissioners to get your approval for several, we have several employees right now that have requested, you can request up to $100 of your bank time for payout, and we usually do it the first payroll in December of each year. Currently, all the applications have been brought to me, and the amount is $16,476, and those funds would come out of the benefit liability account in reserves.
Save money.
And usually, I give you what our current balance is in our account to show that we do have the funds to cover that, plus our regular expenses.
Need a motion on that?
Yes.
I move that we do that.
Second motion. Save money. They ought to be able to do what they want. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor of the motion? Unanimous? Now we gotta set a public hearing for the budget for the UT?
Yes, you should have a copy of the budget that I presented to the state of Maine for their approval. I was wondering if we could set the public hearing for December 7th at 3:15.
Sure.
At our regular meeting.
That's Tuesday, right?
Yes.
Pearl Harbor day. Let's hope it ends better than that one did. Yes, sure. Okay, you want a motion on that?
Yes, please.
I move that we set the meeting for December 7th to go with UT budget there.
Second motion. Second motion. The only question I have is, should we wait to make sure the state approves it before we have the meeting or no?
What they do, they review it, and I have sent it to the state last Wednesday, and I have not heard anything back yet, but I will be contacting them sometime this week to see if there's any changes that need to be made before then.
Okay, all those in favor, so signify.
So I will get that out in the newspaper this week.
Yeah, good, good. Item number eight, personal file storage for all county employees.
Yes, so I made an observation when I started that not all personnel files and medical files are housed in the county office building space. And so I did some research and I reached out to all the counties in Maine, and they all house their personnel, medical, all the files related to employees are housed in one location under HR or the county clerk. So I am coming to you to say that I would like to do what all the other counties in Maine are doing. I have talked to the department heads today, we had a meeting this morning about it. Everybody seems okay with the idea of keeping them under one roof and locked because that's the way they should be, so that nobody is at risk for identity theft, nobody's just rifling through files as they want to. And so I just wanted to approach you and make sure that you're on board with that so that I can start making this process happen. The first thing I plan on doing is developing a short policy that says, you know, our retention policy, which will follow the state, you know, the public sector guidance, our shredding policy, how we're gonna dispose of documents when we're supposed to dispose of them, that's important. So basically, I'm gonna develop this, and I've already started kind of drafting it, bring it to you, and then we'll move forward from there. I've gotta create some space so that we can carry, or we can house all these files, so that's gonna take some time. It's a project, it's an undertaking, but I think it's in the best interest of the county to have everything housed in one location and under locking keys so that not everybody is able to...
Where do you plan to put this?
I plan on doing a lot of organizing, but it looks like in the immediate future, downstairs, we have a space where we have file cabinets, creating some room in that space to put those files in there and have them locked downstairs. Yeah, it's a storage area right now that has a variety of things, but there's space, there's opportunity down there. And so I'll be working with Nick to create some space within that to put all those files in.
I move that we give Tiffany the go-ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead. Are you seconding that? Yes. So if I got a lot of work...
It is going to be, but I think it's necessary.
If you like moving in a home, don't give me...
That's who, that's who, Clyde.
Okay, so it's been moved in second, all those in favor? All those that wanna give Tiffany the go-ahead. All right, is that all of new business at this time? So we'll move to old business, this is a follow-up for the personal protection equipment for maintenance.
Okay, so Lance had asked me when I came out with the dress code policy to research OSHA's requirement on the maintenance position and whether or not they have to wear steel toe boots. The answer is no, there isn't anything that specifies for his role because he doesn't operate heavy machinery, lawn mowing and stuff like that. We can develop any kind of rules around that. It's basically, and I reach out to the counties too to see what they're doing, some of them have contracted their maintenance and stuff, and the ones that do have it in-house, it's kind of a little bit of both, so it's really up to you guys whether or not you wanna put in place a, you know, steel toe boot restriction there, and if you do, you have to give an allowance too for primary purchase of there. So that's...
No, I'm fine with it, I just...
I think we just wanted to make sure we're compliant.
We are, yeah.
Good. Okay, item number two, oh, I see two ladies here, so Mung Blue Garden Club.
Thank you.
I tried to get some funds from...
First thing I'm getting you is a letter from a local scout master, and I'd like to say to Mr. Brand, thank you for being at the arts on Veterans Day. It's nice to see you there, good turnout.
Yes, it was, yes, but I did chat with the governor, she's not willing to share money for your garden club. Because she knows we have the COVID allowance, $5.9 million, spend your own money.
Well, we don't want that much.
Yes.
Did you notice how bad the grass looks?
I did, I did.
It's pretty awful.
I don't think, I think all you have to do is roll it till that up, put a little bit of good fertilizer in it and put some seed down.
We are still waiting on estimates for, two estimates for that work. So what I've given you today, we just wanted to make sure that you understand that the Mung Blue Garden Club is proud of our 50-year-plus working to help maintain this important Franklin County site, and we want to continue working with this project for many years to come. We're here today to ask for your continued collaboration and financial support of this project. And then I just did a summary of the things that we've been talking about to doing, and then a list of people that have currently come on saying that they support the project and they'd be willing to work towards helping make this happen. And I did wanna, I did put at the bottom, we have had one individual that was highly opposed to this project, but generally, the reception's been very positive, and we hope that you'll think it's worthwhile. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, particularly the monument itself. That's why I proposed that we spend the $1,500, because we have $2,000 in the fund. We could give that to you. And then we could give that to the garden club and then they could use it as they wish, they wanna cut a couple of trees, or you wanna clean the stone, or...
I would, you know...
You prioritize your club.
Worth this project.
But the stone does need...
That's money from the World War I auxiliary.
Yes, yes, there's $2,000 that he donated.
Yes, we have $2,000 in the reserve account for the monument.
So it all came from the auxiliary.
Yes.
Garden Club did it.
Yes, but they're spending it.
Would you be willing to have two trees cut down? It's on your, may I take this down?
Yes.
It's on your property.
And the two trees, okay.
Would you be willing?
That question came up the other day, is it on or not? The county's property.
We included in the note, what information we got about those particular trees from the landscape designer, maintenance guy. They're Norway maples, they're no longer able to be sold in Maine any longer. They're highly aggressive, they have a property like a black walnut where nothing will grow around it. Trees aren't in that great shape, aesthetically, they're...
Who owns the fence?
I'm not sure, I would guess just from the look of it, it probably belongs to the homeowners.
I don't get a brother like that.
They put it up, I know.
Okay, so we need to find, I'm forgiving you the $2,000, let you do what you wish, you know, either clean the monument, or cut the trees. I don't know what that would be to cut the trees, the expense.
Well, it's $1,000, I believe, was the estimate for the tree removal.
How big are they, they big trees?
They're very large, they're fifty, seventy, I don't know, I can't make a judgment, they're big.
They're over fifty, for sure. It cost me $1,000 to have a maple tree taken down at my house and the stump ground down. That's what it costs per tree.
Per tree?
The guy from Littmore Falls, it's his business done it, and he done a good job. We could leave the stumps and you could make benches out of them. But that's what I would do for the time being, I don't know, and we'll put this on the list for the COVID. Aren't you gonna do that?
What's the timeline for the COVID list of projects and then when they would decide to?
It's in the future, yeah.
We're in the process of hiring somebody right now. I'm gonna guess, you know, that'd be maybe January 1st, we might set a date for starting to get these in.
I guess I would wonder whether we should plan on planting the site as it exists today for next summer, or if we think that this is a project that's possible and we'd be moving forward to...
You're talking about planting your trees, for your tree lawn?
Talking about removing the trees, planting the trees, and completely redoing the...
So you wouldn't clean?
We need a soil improvement and, probably reseeding. He's going to do a quote both to lay rolls of turf and to reseed it.
I do have one other question, is, would you guys consider anything kind of like, I mean, this, you know, like a match, right? You guys raise a certain amount, we match it, that kind of thing? I'm not promising anything.
No, I understand, you know, we have ladies in the garden club that would love to do fundraising.
Well, I mean, I looked at some of the groups they have supporting, I figured that Franklin County Commissioner Derek Brand probably got a lot of money, he probably pitch in.
I'm not hearing that.
I'll pass that on to Clyde.
Wait a minute. Gotta Russell there, Scott. Governor Mill, let's get her wallet.
She already told me to spend the government.
You didn't ask her for her money personally.
Okay, so if I understand, it would be January that...
That's a rough estimate.
But nothing before then, that we would be able to...
No, I don't think so.
I think you better plan on your maple tree.
Yeah, you might probably do that, and then we probably could come to some kind of decision over the next year, yeah.
I mean, I don't think that we could go forward to try and ask someone to do that work without, I mean, you on the property.
No, no, I'm for, I'm for supporting you folks, you know, help you out in some way, but I would start with the $2,000 amount and then see if we can get more out of the COVID fund when we hire the person to, I would do that. I think that's the consensus. But in the meantime, if you can cut the trees, heck, my pond can cut the trees, you know.
We would be willing to donate toward...
My brother could come to drive, but the last time I changed, my pond was...
Yeah, we don't recommend him.
So have you gotten a quote on, have the trees cut?
We haven't had any real specific quotes because we really don't know what's possible, but we could...
But you're asking for permission to cut the trees.
We would need, we would need your permission.
Yeah, that because it's county property, so we wouldn't have to make the motion.
I move that we give them the opportunity to cut them.
Oh, Vicki's got something. I was wondering if they wanna get some quotes and then...
Okay.
I would decide that time too.
I'd like to see too if there's some way that if that's burnable wood, there's some way to donate.
The guy that done my tree, he held a stone with legs, and he took $1,000, take the tree down, but he still, he took all the wood, so... And I think he sells the wood, maybe gives it away, I don't know what he done, I didn't care.
It doesn't actually work that much.
He got rid of the tree. We did that in the town of Wilton, and we piled it up at the...
Do you have any recommendations of tree or people that you've been happy with?
I think you would go to Yellow Pages of hand.
Okay.
Yeah, just call.
Don't wanna slate anyone, so no. But if you would start with the cleaning of the monument, if we gave you the $2,000...
Stephanie Coffer.
Oh, I thought the bid was $1,500.
No, he wants $24.
Is there other companies, you only have one bid?
I have tried to get the company in Madison to respond, I've had two telephone conversations with him, and he has not...
Who you got?
Wiles. Wiles.
Yeah. The guy is strong, he's got the stuff, and he cleans monuments, he cleans stuff in the cemetery. He's got New Portland, he's done, and he's retired, and I bet you he'd come down and clean it.
And who is his name? Who is he?
Sonny Huff. What's his first name, is it Sonny? I don't know, I've always known by Sonny. Yeah, I've always known Sonny. Well, maybe that'll work for you. Maybe that'll work for them. So it sounds like the $2,000 isn't gonna help them at this time? Because you're gonna have to get more quotes, so we'll just wait.
Okay, so we'll get the quotes and come back when we get the meeting is.
Sure.
Seven, seven. Thank you.
You cleaned all my cemetery, it's on Sonny Huff's...
We've had a couple of pop-type people give us quotes that not real comfortable with...
He knows where he lives. He knows where Sonny lives.
Through the years, the cemetery out here, there's always a crew of young kids out here cleaning stones. I don't know who's in charge of them doing that, I love this volunteer time.
It's through, like, American Legion or Scouts.
Could be, I would look into that.
We're meeting with the American, I don't even wanna hold you up. We are going to meet with the American Legion at the next meeting, so maybe they can fill us in some more.
Wait, hold on. Yeah, they might be.
See, our problem is that's on high, you're gonna need a boom or whatever, how they do it up there. Because I could write in the back, we gotta know what you're doing.
Probably, yeah.
Okay, it does say on this letter, you sound as if the Cub Scouts are interested in helping out.
There is a scout that's looking for a Eagle project, and the gentleman wrote the letter, as in his scout, as in his group.
Scouts in our troop have expressed an interest in participating in refreshing and improving the park, both as a service to our community and in honor of our veterans.
Sounds like we have a bunch of watchers.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Just need funds to start it. Okay, thanks for coming, ladies.
Thank you.
Last but not least, and I'm sure the...
If you guys do get ahold of Sonny Huff there, you might ask him, like, if you could supply some volunteers, would that reduce the, like, he has the equipment, right, Clyde?
Well, just brushing the stuff that he...
It's probably gonna need some kind of lift equipment.
He gets it by gallon of jug.
Yeah, I have some of that at home, I bought some.
Oh, wow.
But our problem is we need a boom to get up there.
Yeah, yeah, you're gonna need some. So it's all a stage. He wouldn't be able to do that. Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Schoolhouse Road, item number three under the old business, that must be you, Mike.
I didn't put it on there.
No, I did. Thank you, Dave. So like, two meetings ago, you had approved to close the road permanently for county maintenance, and so I notified Ms. Richmond, who owns most of the property up there, and notified her to let her know what the decision was by the commissioners, and they, so she emailed me back and told me that they feel that it's not in the best interest to sign off on the bridge.
Really?
Yeah. She said that they have spoken to several people that all say that it's a bad idea for us to do that. Discontinuing the road can't be done as parking for the historical society and another hole or part of Schoolhouse Road?
There's one house on the Schoolhouse Road. Yes, at the beginning, wasn't it? Yeah, that's where she lives.
Yeah, because right now, it's already closed to winter maintenance, as of two... Yeah, because right now it's already closed to winter maintenance, as of two, in two thousand seventeen.
Well, what?
It was already closed to winter maintenance in two thousand seventeen.
Right.
So, but I just wanted to present that to you. I haven't started any process I want, you know, down to be.
Then we'll be able to what we talked about, and we'll stop everything.
Yeah. Well, that's a, that's a great question, and it's always, it has been the question is, you know, according to all the documentations that we have, and according to the state of Maine, the county owns two hundred and eleven feet. And the two hundred and eleven feet comes just beyond the driveway of the first house that's on the left. And the gentleman that lived there passed away and his dog lives there now.
Right.
The people that were talking about contesting closing the road live beyond that, they go across the bridge. They, so that's been the great decision, is, is where does the road stop? Well, according to the documents that we had found, it's two hundred and eleven feet now. Somebody wants to contest that, I guess they can, but for me, I just look at, it says two hundred and eleven feet, I don't know what you want me to do. As far as there's a historical society, they can pack in front of the building.
You're right.
But they choose to pack on the sides and they've always used it because it used to be a town center. It used to be the town office there, it was on the Schoolhouse Road, so. That would, I would think that would fall upon, you know, if the homeowner that lives there now presently says, I don't want you to access that road, it would come, you know, who has the right? Where does, where does the center of the road go? And if a historical society owns to the center of the road, then they still have right to use the old county road that was closed.
That might, don't that road go around?
It used to loop around, but I don't think, Clyde, it was ever intended to be a road. I think it was one of those things, a good old boy would just mop a path up through and just continue to use it.
They drove everywhere on the lawn when we had that ceremony for the old.
Yeah, they just, it's a good old boy rhetoric. So I don't, I don't know what you wanna do. I just see it on the document, I said, I guess I'm gonna go, I don't know what they're gonna say.
I'm concerned they don't agree to sign off on them, so I'm not for putting in any money into that bridge if we don't own it.
Yeah.
Right. That, I wish you would kind of repeat that a little bit, what you said. You, they called, she got on you. And what did she say?
She said, we have decided that it's not in our best interest to sign off on the bridge.
Well, oh, that's enough. I don't think it's in the best interest of the county to go any further with this bridge.
I'm, I'm that same feeling, Clyde.
In the best interest of the county.
Do we need to make that a motion?
I would say yes.
Okay.
I want that motion.
And so do you want me to proceed further on the discontinuing of the road completely?
Nope, with two hundred and eleven feet, it's good enough for me, for Mike, he's out of road. He's an agent, and?
No, no, we've proposed discontinuing it, right?
Yes, after we fix the bridge.
Right, and they not, don't wanna do that. Okay, got, okay. My point is, what does the motion, we've already done this, right?
No, I made a motion that we repair the bridge.
No, no, okay, so you're saying because they're rejecting it, we need a new motion?
Right.
That is rejecting.
So, okay, no, no, I got it now, I got it.
That's why I did it.
And they still want the county to maintain the bridge.
We're not gonna, no.
So?
So you need to make that motion.
They just blew the new bridge, I don't get that.
Yeah, I thought they were agreeing.
Yeah, I guess we could, we could either just have that motion or say, take it or leave it, one more time, or whatever.
No.
No, all right, fine, fine, let's move with it, go.
We fought with this for three months, didn't we?
Yeah, it's been a while.
And they give Mike a hard time.
Yeah.
Very hard. That's enough of that then.
We've had enough of it, they don't want to make.
We go the two hundred and eleven feet?
That's it?
That's it. So I'll make the motion that we only take care of the two hundred and eleven feet.
There you go.
That the county owns.
I second the motion.
Do what?
That we only maintain the two hundred and eleven feet that he's found in the records that the county owns. It's before the bridge where the road ends.
Why are you making that motion? That's not your area to make a motion. That should be up to me.
Well, go ahead, make the motion.
It's my district.
Really, I didn't, I don't need to step on your toes.
You do have.
Well, why?
You have very much, Lee, I don't walk in your area and step on your toes, no way. Now, I'm trying to get this straightened out with, in my district.
Okay, Clyde.
But you're, you're all right on your, I know what we wanna do, but I'd like to do away with the whole road.
Well, it's kind of what he's doing. We're kind of doing that, like saying?
He's just saying.
You're gonna have to maintain two hundred and eleven feet.
That's true.
You're gonna have to maintain.
Close the way the maintenance, so.
It's going to win the maintenance.
But there's not much left to do.
Okay, no. Go for it, I made my second motion.
Okay, good. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
On a happier note, on a happier note, they completed the septic system for the county, police, I call it the county police, county sheriff's department. And the guy did a really nice job, they went down three times and did a bang out jobs and?
Yeah, so you got to see it before they covered it, right?
Oh, I went in and see it before it was all hooked up.
Good, okay. And that's, that's pretty well oversized, right?
Yeah, I mean, every, the sheriff's department tried it out this third night that it was hooked up. They turned the water on and, and it flopped and it stuck, so it was running all night long. And there was no appearance of water anyway, so they tested it.
I was gonna say, what, do you line everybody up and say, go, boys?
Is that it, Mike? That's it, that's all I, I just.
Is there any further?
Uh, any other?
Yes, there is.
I have two.
I knew there would be one.
Knew it.
So we were discussing previously about the COVID premium pay for employees that weren't during COVID.
Yeah.
So I gave you a sheet that I received today from another county that's, that's reporting to what counties have, what some of the counties have for employees.
Nothing, nothing.
So if you look at Andrew Skoggin County, do you have it, do you have it, Clyde? Yeah, right there.
Yeah.
I didn't find it.
So if you wanna review those and make a recommendation on what you would like to do, I had Mary, because we had, we had presented to you previously on, on an amount which Lance wanted to do. It was a different amount for managers and full time and part time. And so I also had Mary figure out today for like a flat two thousand dollar stipend for sixty-two full-time employees and five part-time employees.
So it'd be, so we were talking two thousand full-time, thousand part-time, is that what we're talking about? Or just two thousand for everybody?
Two thousand, everybody across the board.
About that time, we could see two thousand for that time too?
Yeah, yeah. Because, because?
And how much does that come to?
Three of the part-timers actually worked in the jail during COVID.
Um, okay, how many of them are the jail personnel?
Um, hold on.
What was the question?
So for the jail personnel, there is sixteen.
And how much is, how much is everybody else? If you take the sixteen away, what are we looking at for number?
Well, it's sixty-two full-time, so, well, actually, yeah, sixteen is sixteen full-time and one, one part-time.
So it's a hundred and thirty thousand, something like that.
So a hundred and thirty four thousand.
Hundred and thirty.
You know, with everybody.
At all, yes.
It's costing, doing a flat, everybody is the same, which, John, I don't think?
Two thousand across the board.
You should probably consider doing, same for everyone.
I don't know, people have been talking to me about this and, and one person said to me that they thought that the people who were working, actually being in the trenches, should be the ones to get the money. But if in order to be fair to everybody, you'd have to give it across the board.
And I don't like the five thousand for the managers.
No, I agree with that afterwards, I think you're right, it was just, I agree with that.
I like across the board, the same, yes, the two, yes.
Um, the only, the only thing I wanna say with this, right, is, yeah, I think, I think I can support it, right? Somebody needs to tell those guys at the jail that there's a two thousand dollar check waiting for them if they sign and get this contract taken care of.
Actually, I haven't, I haven't updated that.
That was for next time.
So I finally got ahold of Bill Doyle from the ERU. And I asked him, I said, asked him what the holdup was, and he didn't agree with the pay scales that I had created. So he wants to meet again with Lance and myself, and also Doug, with the union reps there, to discuss those pay scales.
This is for the?
The, the pay scales for the custodian, the?
The new people.
Yes, the new people that would be added to the contract.
Have they joined this union yet?
No, because the union contract has not been finalized yet.
Does he know they're gonna join it?
I have not heard.
This makes no sense. Unions.
So you need to figure out when that can happen?
Yeah, so, so I told Bill to send me some dates, which would be, and I would provide it to you, and I have not heard back.
Send them, right? Make it the afternoon.
Make it in the afternoon?
Try to make it in the afternoon.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Tell them I waited all summer for him. You don't wait for them.
Yeah, so that's the only holdup, the rest, the rest of the contract is good.
So, yeah, so did he give back what he's looking at for a number?
No, he did not.
Well, that's not.
He wants to?
He wants to talk about it, right?
And he said?
And who's the new, the new union person that?
Jane Harper.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, and she, so she, will she be there?
Yes, I would have her available also to do that, yeah. So I will email Bill again tomorrow about some dates.
Okay.
Get back.
Yeah, tell them it would be easier for me in the afternoon.
Um, so, do you wanna discuss further on the?
The two thousand?
The, the, yeah, the free meal thing? I didn't know, have you had a chance to review the sheet that I provided to the other counties?
Yeah, I wanna look at it, and I think we should include the person that we hired.
Yeah, and what about, what about like?
Not to give her the two thousand E or G, but to discuss it, because they might have some ideas on how to handle this.
Okay, oh, you mean the finance manager?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and what about like, like a lorna who was here and during that period, what are we?
Nobody was here during the period, I would think it'd be.
Okay.
And by reading some of the other counties, that they were basically doing current employees. And some of them did employees that were hired, hired before a certain date.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would go for that if you, if somebody's worked a month, I wouldn't. If somebody's worked all year and you're giving two thousand dollars each, that is there, would it? Would you think it would be fair?
Yeah, because one, one county is?
No, no, there's, there's nothing fair about this, you know, at all.
But I think if somebody has worked all year, last year, two thousand, what do you?
After, after kind of thinking it over some, I don't disagree with you.
No, no, no.
But the problem is, once you start going, okay, then this one, then that one. And so it starts getting all convoluted, and no matter what you do, someone has a grievance that's understandable, so it's just like, look, is, everybody take this, this, we don't wanna argue about it.
Because it's money. People act over money.
It isn't as if, they don't have a legitimate complaint half the time, you know, it's like, well, I did this, but they did that, and they did this, but I did this, it's like?
Yeah, more variable.
But I'm still saying that if somebody's worked three months or six months and somebody's worked a year, you know, it's, it's gonna be an odd situation. That guy that worked, the person that worked six months is tickled to death, but you worked all year, heck with you.
It could also be Clyde, that if they came from someplace, they didn't get the money when they were there because they were only doing the current, I don't know.
Yeah.
Everybody's gonna be getting a three hundred dollar check more or less, this government, right?
Yeah.
That showed up, I mean, I, you know.
But we gotta do something.
Yeah, that's the point.
And I think it's an idea that we should wait for a person that we are hiring in the stimulus to guide us in this direction.
Okay.
Me too.
So we'll just hold this off until the new year then, basically, to?
Can we wait another year?
Well, we gotta wait till we hire a new, a new person.
Right, when do we hire the new?
We thought we just hired.
No.
Didn't we? No, no, you're talking.
No, the ARPA.
Oh, no, okay, so we're talking, okay, wait a minute. You, were you talking about the finance management or the ARPA?
Yeah.
Okay, no, okay, got it, yeah, okay, that's fine.
So I, I figured that most, you know, once you do hire someone, it'll be a few weeks before they do start, so.
Yeah.
I figured towards the beginning of the year.
Um, I do, I do just have a quick question on that, right, is, is there any contesting this anywhere, that they're doing this?
I haven't heard anything. I mean, I've, I've been zooming in on, on the monthly meetings between all the counties. And a lot, some of these people have already paid their employees also, if you look at the chart.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if, if, because I haven't heard any problem for this one.
No, I haven't either.
Is it, is it a way that you could kind of quickly, and I'm not trying to cut the ARPA personnel, I'm just thinking like, if they get a couple thousand bucks before Christmas, and we didn't delay it?
You guys would be their favorite.
Well, no, it's just, you know, I mean?
We would love you.
No, I understood that very thing, but I'd just like to have more input. The more input that I receive, the more comfortable.
Well, it's the first challenge we can throw at this person.
Because some people didn't?
How fast you get it done.
Pay the employees.
Some people didn't even work through the COVID virus.
You're right.
They stayed home, so, and we're gonna treat those like?
Yeah, I actually kind of, I thought for a minute ago, you were kind of saying, let's just try to, rather than talk them out. I don't dis, I understand where you're going, I don't disagree with that, it's just how complicated that you wanna make it.
And what do you consider the COVID timeframe?
Yeah.
Are you considering certain months out of the last year and a half, that people didn't work, because you have to take that into consideration too, right?
That's that day.
You're defining, say, March through September, that if you didn't work, then you're not getting the money, you know? But you're still employed with the county, you gotta be careful in that too.
I would.
You didn't, I do wanna make sure, you didn't count that, right?
No.
Yeah, we said that on the other.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure.
And, and, Carrie?
Beautiful, beautiful, that's all right. Cut me right out.
I've cut myself out too.
All right.
You'd get so proud of you to say it, so you made money.
I sold money.
So well, you stay.
Yeah, well, when you mentioned, when you mentioned that people didn't work during, during COVID, can you explain that further, what you actually?
Well, if you don't come through the door.
Okay.
You know, and I have a hard time with people in the courthouse, because you close the doors. No public can enter for about, what, three months? So that, that makes me, I have a strange feeling about the poor guy that's working up at the jail. And he's in a fistfight every Saturday night because they, whatever they do up there in the jail. He's handling bodies. And here we are protecting the people in the courthouse by closing the doors and don't let anybody in. I think there's a huge difference there. So, but, and Lance has said, we could dig into this and say, this person only worked half-time, so they get a thousand dollars, like Clyde's, you know, and they get it. But these?
So I don't, I think?
Well, I was gonna say, are you thinking less, less for the, for the, like, for the courthouse employees that?
No.
Okay.
No, because I don't like the idea of treating some people differently than the others. We have sixty-two, is it? Is that the number? Sixty-two employees full-time.
Sorry, sorry.
And?
Five part-time, three, five part-time.
There's sixty-two full-time and five part-time.
Yeah, so we got sixty-seven employees, so, two thousand dollars.
Could you, just a thought, give everybody, of course, whatever you decide for this COVID bonus, but then do something individually that is, that shows appreciation for the work that they have done, because they have, I mean, work that they have done because they have, I mean, you said it, they've been doing a different type of work through COVID, and it's been very challenging. Something separate to recognize that.
I, I thought that as a negotiating item, remember when I said that one time.
And I'm not necessarily saying extra money, I'm saying some kind of recognition.
Incremental, could we give them, to be nice, give them $1,000, all the employees $1,000?
Now and then, a thousand after we get the ARPA person.
After we get the.
All right, let's do that.
Yeah, I mean, because you can always give them more every later date.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we're.
I'm suggesting as a Christmas bonus, turkey or whatever.
We'll give them, we'll give them part of it.
$1,000.
Our intention, so, so I would say that, I'm just thinking how to word it, right? So we'll give $1,000 now, and then after the ARPA person's in, we get a set up, our intention is to give another $1,000. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So I move that we give $1,000 now out of the ARPA funds, and after the, you know, the person's in, that, and which would be after the first of the year, there will be, you know, another $1,000. Our intention is another $5,000 coming, barring no ARPA issues. That's the way I would work it.
Catch that, Clyde? I did, and I don't like it.
What is that?
I'm not voting for it.
What is that?
Well, I'll second it.
You go ahead and second it.
Now, discussion.
Yeah.
And I just said, I didn't look care for that.
Okay, well, yeah, why?
And why? Because I don't think it's right. There's something wrong with his proposal. And I think it'll come out. If it passes, it'll come out in January. What, what's the proposal be wrong?
Who is it? Mike's fault, he said, what's wrong with my proposal, Clyde?
I just told you.
You just said it would come out, you haven't told me what it is.
How? I said it would come out later.
Well, what will come out later?
Something's gonna come out later with it because it's wrong.
Well, what's wrong about it?
I don't like it, I said.
Well, okay, you could say don't like it, I don't, I don't, you don't have to vote for it. I just was wondering why, and you really haven't explained why to me.
I thought it was fair, Clyde, to give everybody.
It's because, I guess, if, the way Terry is putting it, he's separating the courthouse employees.
No.
No, no, they decided not to do that.
We decided not to do that.
We, we, basically, were you, what did you say about closing the doors at the courthouse? The employees shouldn't get as much because you closed the doors at the courthouse, but you didn't at the jail, right?
Correct.
Okay, since the table, back off.
Okay.
Isn't that what you said?
Yes.
Okay, so wouldn't that filter with his promotion?
No, 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 his motion was to just, which I said we should do, is to give them a half of the payment now until we get the rapper person in, and we finish the other half later. In other words, give them $1,000 because it's Christmas time, you know, I don't want to be in the rich.
Oh, you're good.
Clyde.
Yes, sir.
What Terry said was, he didn't feel comfortable with it, but he realized you could end up indefinitely dissecting this. So rather than doing that, he was saying, yeah, let's go with the 2,000, let's do it in two increments.
When you dissect it in January, what, you're gonna come up with?
We're not gonna dissect it in January. That's not what my proposal is.
The other half.
The other half. No, you're, he's talking, his dissection was, it would be different for the courthouse or different for this guy, but he is essence saying, yeah, that's too complicated, it'll cause problems. So he never made a motion on that. He's making a motion, he's seconding a motion that is agreeing to the 2,000, 1,000 now, and 1,000 in January after the ARPA person makes sure everything's on the good and up and up.
For everyone.
For every.
For everyone, there's no.
For all 67 employees.
Okay. I'm still not gonna second it.
Okay.
I did. You're not sad?
No, okay.
Okay.
Because I've seen things promised before and it didn't turn out. It's a difference, right?
Is that your fear? Huh? So that's your fear?
Yes, it is. And that's my fear, that it couldn't, it might not work out. If you offer somebody half it now and say, well, we'll give you the other half a couple months down the road, and if it doesn't work out, then you promised those people the other half.
Clyde, a minute ago, if I'm not mistaken, or a few minutes ago, you did not want to give the 2,000 until we had the ARPA person, right?
Well.
You, you, at one point you said, I don't think we should move on this until we have that person we've hired. Do it.
That's what we thought was gonna happen.
Right. So what we did was saying, if we do that, they won't get anything until January. So then.
Wait, you weren't gonna hire your person?
The person's gonna get hired in December, but they, they, they might not be up to speed within that week, and that was the issue. So we said, well, why don't we just go with 1,000 now that they'll get before Christmas, and then when the person gets here, just making sure we've got our Ps and Qs crossed, they get the other 1,000.
You really changed that around.
I haven't changed a thing around. Not a thing.
That's how I, that. We're not, not gonna shout them. Go ahead.
Anyway, whatever.
All right, go ahead, go ahead, get something done here.
Okay, all right.
So, so just to make Clyde feel comfortable, what I have read about, about, about the COVID for essential employees is, everybody's doing the same thing across the board. So I don't think it's gonna change when we hire the new ARPA person. I think they're gonna read the same thing that I did.
Yeah, I'm hoping.
That we can proceed forward with the other 1,000 after, after we hire that person.
So I don't think the guidelines are that.
The guidelines are not, no, there's, I actually got more, more stipulations on that, on how it's done. And there, there's no issue.
I want everybody in this room to hear that in January, they'll get the other half of $1,000. They'll get the other $1,000 in January. I want everybody to remember that.
Yes.
What happens if we increase it? Are you gonna be against that?
No, I would be, but I don't think we should. We get, we want to give $2,000, and I think it's a there. Don't you?
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, but I just want everybody to remember that in January, the other $1,000 will come to us.
That's the intent.
That's the.
So that's, so that's the motion.
Better be there.
So we need to vote.
Yes, all those in favor of the motion, those opposed. Two for and one against. Okay?
Okay, I have one more item.
One more.
Don't get things stirred up.
Oh my God, this is information that you asked me about at the, at the last meeting, um, when you promoted me to interim county clerk. You wanted to go back retro.
Yeah.
So I did a calculation, going back retro 24 hours, which is the county courts hourly. And I also did a 32 and a half hours on the hours that have, that I have bought. So these are the two totals here. Yeah. That's what, that's what the amount.
Couple hundred dollars on, can you see?
Yeah.
One is 30, one, yeah, 35.
I moved, can I make a moment?
Yes.
Yes.
I moved that we pay for the higher figure.
30, 3,580.
On the 30.
Do I hear that seconded?
Seconded.
Do you want to, do you want to read the number that you?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I do.
Okay.
3,580 for the 64th.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, so signify. It's unanimous. All three.
And I have no more.
Okay, Tiffany.
Oh, there is one document that I put in your folders. It's from EMA, from Tim. He's gonna be on the agenda regarding that next meeting, so you're gonna want to read that. Yep, right there, Clyde, you know that.
Oh, Tim's.
Mutual aid agreement.
Yeah, he's on the agenda for the next time. So he wanted you to have that ahead